Pete's listening, we're gonna be starting in about ten seconds, Pete. I'm gonna call the order of this meeting of the Chelmsford Select Board, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty. A few housekeeping notes before we start pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteenth, two thousand twenty order opposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation in the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.chelmsfordma.gov. This meeting, members of the public who wish to watch this meeting may do so by accessing the Chelmsford Television website at www.chelmsfordtv.org. No in-person attendance to members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we're unable to do so despite the best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio, video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Second note is the chat box that's opened when you hit the chat bubble in the bottom of your screen is public record. If you decide to privately chat someone using the chat button, that is also part of the public record. So just keep that in mind when you're using the chat. Do not put anything there that you would not want to read out loud in front of a courtroom. So with that, we'll begin the meeting. We will start with the public service announcements.
We have one public service announcement for the spring twenty twenty-one annual town meeting. The town of Chelmsford will convene the twenty twenty-one Spring Town Meeting on Monday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Articles to be included on the warrant must be submitted in duplicate to the Office of the Town Manager at fifty Billerica Road prior to four P M. on Monday, January fourth, twenty twenty-one. Any articles submitted after that time will not be considered by the Select Board for inclusion on the warrant. Petitioned articles submitted by private citizens must carry the signatures of at least ten or more certified voters of the town of Chelmsford. For more information, please contact the Town Manager's Office at nine seven eight two five zero five two zero two, Chelmsford Select Board.
And we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Virginia. That brings us to open session. Is anybody that would like to speak? You can either turn on your microphone, or you can send something in the chat note here. I can turn it on. We have a couple of people in the waiting room. I'm just waiting for them to click in.
Mr. Chair, if Cheryl.
Anybody for open session?
If Cheryl Perkins is not in the meeting, she did send a letter she requested be read.
Okay.
Do you want me to do that now?
I don't see. Yeah, if you could, get that out of the way. We're waiting.
This is from Cheryl Perkins at Ten Warwick Drive, sent on December first. Dear Town Manager and Select Board Members, I am sending this letter to recognize and applaud the efforts of Town Clerk Patricia Zouris, as well as Mary Lou Carney, Nancy Souza, and Jennifer Almedia of the Town Clerk's Office for their successful implementation and execution of the September twenty twenty primary and November twenty twenty general elections. Under what can certainly be described as a once-in-a-lifetime set of circumstances, including the COVID nineteen pandemic, the introduction of an extensive mail-in and early voting opportunities for the citizenry and an extremely charged political climate, they delivered to our citizens elections that were well-organized, well-staffed, safe, and without incident. It was no small task, and unlike anything they had been asked to do before. Beginning in mid-July, when the applications for early voting ballots started arriving in the clerk's office, I, along with other residents, assisted them in preparing for the two elections, receiving and archiving ballot requests, assembling and mailing out primary and then later general election ballots, receiving voted ballots, reconciling received voted ballots to the ballot request, securely maintaining voted ballots, and then finally tabulating the early ballots. In the background of all this election activity, the normal functions of the Town Clerk's Office continued: birth and death certificates, marriage and dog licenses, two-town meetings, and the endless phone calls for every question under the sun. And of course, all the unprecedented demands of keeping public volunteers and staff safe from the pandemic. From mid-July to early November, I spent over three hundred hours in the clerk's office on these election tasks, making me qualified to report to you that these four professionals spared no effort to make sure that every voter issue was researched and resolved, every voter question was answered, every new voter registration was processed, and every early ballot application and early voted ballot was treated with reverence. They each went above and beyond, and the town of Chelmsford owes them a debt of gratitude for their dedication and hard work to make this election cycle the success it was. Thank you in advance. Sincerely, Cheryl M. Perkins.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I still, I don't see anybody else wishing to speak in open session, so we will.
Well, I would, Kim.
Oh, John?
No, it doesn't have a raise hand.
All right, John, do you wanna, do you wanna speak?
Yeah, I did wanna. I saw one of the agenda items was the, I don't know, it was Brian on the Diversity Committee. And he, he had made a, which, when I, when I saw it, he made what I thought was, I was shocked. But he had made a comment about the Chelmsford Police that, or not Chelmsford Police, the police were, can I say the word bastards? But doing a little more looking into it, I kinda understand, and I, and I read his letter, and I, I don't know him at all. But I think I'm speaking to say that I think, I'm thinking that selectmen, I'm hoping the selectmen keep him on the committee. I think that's a great committee. I think that the goal of, you know, having more diversity in this town is a good thing. I also understand, I mean, just a little background, I, before I bought a house, or before we even moved here, I worked in Chelmsford. I lived in Stowe for eight years. And had witnessed, you know, some of the things the police, the Chelmsford Police Department, or their practices at the time. And I'm gonna say right off the, we're much better, in my opinion, a much better department than we ever were. You know, they, I'm glad that the, the police chief, his predecessor, the town managers, and probably most importantly, the Board of Select, well, Select Board, but it was called Board of Selectmen then, you know, stopped that kind of allowing that the police officers could, could harass the citizens, especially the teenagers and high school students as a sport, you know? So I, you know, I, so I can kinda see, I saw his age and everything. I can kinda see where he's coming from. I think his letter is very sincere. I've never met him. I've never talked to him. But I would hope that the board, you know, takes that into consideration and, and allows him to continue on that committee. I think that committee is great. I think, you know, I would never have brought a house here if the police, the police department was the same as it was in the nineteen eighties, when I was working in Chelmsford as a plant manager. So I think, I think I can understand that, and I would ask you guys to take that into consideration. So that's, I guess that's all I have to say about that.
Okay.
Do you have any question?
Anybody else?
We're gonna take this number eight, or do you want, should we talk about it right now?
I think we should just follow the agenda.
Okay, that's what I asked. I, I, I just didn't wanna respond to John, and then have the same thing to say, you know, later on, you know?
Yeah, no, I think we should just stick with the agenda. We'll just keep moving through it. If that's okay with everybody.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. So we close the public session. I don't see anybody else. All right. So move on with committee vacancies.
So the current committee vacancies, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has two openings, the CCA Advisory Committee has two openings, the Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee has two openings. The Commission on Disabilities has one vacancy, the Community Action Program Committee has one, the Community Preservation Fund Committee has one, and the Council on Aging has five associate member positions open. The Energy Conservation Committee has three vacancies, the Historic District Commission has one, the Holiday Decorating Committee has one vacancy, the Middle Sex Canal Commission has two vacancies. All applicants are welcome for the Parade Committee. The Permanent Building Committee has one vacancy, the Personnel Board has one vacancy, the Public Celebrations Committee has five vacancies, the Recycling Committee has one vacancy, the Roberts Field Advisory Committee has one vacancy, and the Tree Committee has two vacancies. If you are interested in serving on a town board or committee, you can complete an application on the town website or contact the Town Manager's Office at tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov, nine seven eight two five zero five two zero two.
All right, thank you, Virginia. We'll go to our licenses. But first up, we have a common vigilar license for transfer for J D Pizza, Inc., doing business as Domino's Pizza. And I don't know if I see anybody here for.
Mr. Askew is here.
That's me.
Nope. Oh, he is still here. Okay. Well, it's like you, for some reason are not on my list. Can you hear me? Turned on. Yep, we can hear you. Do you want your video on?
Uh, it's up to you. I can start it. Sure. How you doing?
Okay, there you go. Good. How are you?
I'm good.
Okay, so what we doing here?
Well, was that what we're doing? Transferring of vehicles from G D S Enterprises to J D Pizza? It's, everything's staying the same. It's a Domino's Pizza. It's just, we bought it from G D S Enterprises.
So.
Okay.
Do the, the four plans that are in the application, those don't represent a change?
No, everything has stayed the same.
Were you people part of, were you part of the management before or anything, and were any of the people gonna continue with the company from the previous operation, or is this a whole new group of people?
Uh, we've kept the majority of the employees. I don't know if they're all kept, but we have to do backgrounds and N V Rs and everybody when we hire them and for our company. But I think almost everyone stayed, and we're just a different corporation running it.
Thank you. Pat, do you have any, any questions?
I do not. You know, it looks like a pretty straightforward move.
I don't have any either, so that.
I will make a motion to approve the common vigilar license transfer to J D Pizza, Inc., doing business as Domino's Pizza at one eighteen Chelmsford Street, Unit One, from G D S Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Domino's Pizza.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, by roll call. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Great. Congratulations. Best of luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a great holiday.
You too.
You too.
Next up, we have an annual license renew, renewal for wines and malt beverages restaurant and common vigilar license. Is anybody here for that? I don't see anybody. It's just a renewal though, Paul, right?
Yes, it's a renewal. It was carried over from the previous time because we were waiting for a work order to do some repairs. That's been submitted, and so the, the board is free to act on the application, again, subject to the inspections, which are typical with all license holders.
I will, yeah. I will make a motion to renew the twenty, the wine and malt license for twenty twenty-one for Koo and N G Corporation doing business as Sakura Japanese Cuisine at Seven Summer Street.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second, all in favor, by roll call. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Next up, we have our reports and presentations, Traffic Safety Committee.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Spenny and Steve Yonley are here to provide, and Gary Priscetti here to provide the traffic safety report this month. I guess we, the, in terms of the presentation itself, I think we'll begin, there's a handout, and it speaks about sort of a follow-up from the previous meeting regarding the traffic study on, on Main Street and so forth, so I'll turn it over to Chief Spenny and Steve Yonley at this point.
Oh, good evening.
Do you need the presentation?
Uh, no, I have it in front of me. I, I think it'll be.
You want it up on the screen, though?
Yeah, I think that'll be helpful. Yep.
And you'll just need to tell me when to move it along. And you can see it now?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Um, I can speak to the, really, the fourth item, the fourth and fifth item, and the sixth item, then I can go on to the speed studies themselves. And Mr. Yonley can probably talk about some of the other D P W projects. But with regards to stop signs, we, you know, as part of the traffic committee's responsibilities, we get emails and phone calls throughout the month with regards to various signage issues, and it's one of the things we address at each meeting. So we have replaced a number of stop signs, particularly in the Varney neighborhood. There were some stop signs at some of those four-way intersections in them, missing, missing or damaged. So those were replaced. The Main Street Speed Studies, which I'll go over in a minute, were two supplemental studies we did after the October twentieth to twenty-sixth study we did during the traffic calming. We did two additional studies after that, and I'll go over that in a second. With regards to Littleton Road, interestingly enough, the state D P W lowered the speed limit from forty-five to forty, pretty much the entire length of Littleton Road in Chelmsford, except for when you initially leave the center. It's twenty-five until you get past the Bertucci's Plaza. And it used to be a forty-five, and it kinda jumped around a little bit. It was actually quite confusing. I'm happy to say they lowered it to a forty. What I find interesting is I was not notified of this. The Chelmsford Police Department was not notified of this change, not that they have to notify us, because it is a state street. But we just kinda have, we just kinda happened upon the fact that it was lowered. The only thing I contribute that to is we have sent a number of concerns to the state with regards to Littleton Road. And we have also had residents tell us that they had contacted the state as well. So it is possible that after receiving correspondence from Chelmsford Police, the town in general, they maybe did a reevaluation. There has been a number of new, new facilities that have popped up at Littleton Road. It's a little bit more congested than it used to be a number of years ago, so I'm happy to see the change. So it is a lot more consistent now. So basically, once you leave the center and get out of that initial downtown area, it is a consistent forty miles an hour for the entire length of one-ten until you enter the town of Westford, where it jumps back to a forty-five. So I was happy to see that reduction. I thank the state for that, and some of the emails that we have been getting in the traffic committee had been with regards to Littleton Road Speed Zone, and that the request was that it be lowered to a forty. So I'm glad to see that was, that, that took place. Uh, we can go to the study now, Mr. Chairman, if you want to advance. Okay, so this was the, the second study we did, one week after the first one, when the traffic calming was in place. So this study, which began on October thirtieth, ran through November fifth. This was done after the barrels were removed. And I'm pleased to say that the numbers were, were pretty good. Just to kinda summarize here. And again, there are limitations to the system. It's worth reminding the board and the public that this, this particular system is a sign-based system that illuminates when a vehicle approaches it, and it only captures vehicles heading towards the sign. So this, this equipment was in the exact same location as it was for, that it was in the prior study while the traffic calming was in place. And it was on a telephone pole, maybe a quarter of a mile before Lovett Lane, probably a little less than that, heading towards Westford. So again, only one lane of traffic captured over a twenty-four-hour period. And what we found out was, from that timeframe of ten-thirty to eleven-five, over ninety percent of all the vehicles captured were doing only ten miles an hour over the speed limit or less. So I was very, I was pleased to see that. Eight percent were doing forty-one miles an hour to forty-five, and about one percent was doing forty-six miles an hour or greater. So that was good to see. The vast majority of the vehicles doing about, you know, under ten miles an hour over the posted thirty miles an hour speed limit. This, so an average speed was about thirty-five point four miles an hour. We, there was one anomaly during the study. We lost some data on eleven-one. That's why if you look to the right, you see total only twenty-nine vehicles, as opposed to almost every other day was a thousand. And then on eleven-five, that number looks low to me, too, at five hundred and eighteen. So it is a, so it is a sign system with batteries and some solar capability, and there are glitches with the system. So, you know, in a week's deployment, sometimes you will lose a day. But I'm happy to say that the vast majority of vehicles captured were not exceeding the speed limit by an excessive amount. Very close to the average speed when the traffic calming was in place, although, although it is worth noting that where this sign is, it's not in an area that the traffic calming was. So that, that plays a part into it. Mr. Chairman, can you advance, please, unless there's a question? Okay, and then the following week, from November sixth to November thirteenth, we moved the equipment. We moved it down closer to Will. I was pleased to see the data. Eighty-three percent of all vehicles captured were doing five miles an hour over or less. Fifteen percent of the vehicles were doing thirty-six to forty miles an hour. So when you total those up, ninety percent of all the vehicles captured in this study were, were doing only ten miles an hour over the speed limit. So I was happy with that average speed of thirty-three miles point seven, thirty-three point seven miles an hour. So I'm hap, I think, I think these speeds are down because we have done so much enforcement on Main Street, really, for the better part of six months. I think installing the traffic calming equipment makes people think about their speed. Although the traffic calming didn't achieve some of our goals, at least in, in the temporary fashion it was up, it makes people think about their speed when they're on that roadway. So I think combined with the extensive officer presence that we've had out there, the speeds are down. That being said, I can still, I still consider Main Street to be a priority for us. And moving forward, we're gonna continue with the speed boy, uh, speed boy deployment, officer enforcement. And I also have a capital request in for the next fiscal year for additional speed illumination warning type of signage that we've talked about before. Not unlike what's on Old Westford Road near Davis. I would like to see something of a more permanent nature on Main Street with those type of illuminating warning devices. I think those will go a long way. So we're gonna keep doing these speed studies across the community. When we get complaints about vehicle speed, we're gonna start deploying the sign as part of a regular procedure. We have been doing that, but we're gonna keep doing it to either, it helps us see if, if the complaints are genuine, or if it's more of a optic thing. We've all seen vehicles, especially if they're large, drive by, and we think they're speeding, but in actuality, sometimes they're not. So it's gonna help us determine if there is a problem or not. And like I said, I did make an extra capital request on that equipment, so we're gonna be able to supplement the signboard we have with several other pieces of equipment. So I think that'll be very helpful. Uh, you can probably go to the next page unless there's a question. Again, as far as current projects, radar enforcement on target areas, we're gonna keep using a speed board, although when it does start to get a little bit more inclement with winter weather, we're not gonna deploy the board. It's, it's, it's too easily for the board to be damaged. Again, continue to conduct the traffic studies. Uh, Westford Street at Dalton Road, that issue was brought to our attention last month, where the person that emailed us was concerned that when you're coming up the short end of Dalton, they felt it was too dangerous to take a left onto Westford Street, where you come over the rise on Westford Street. So we took a look at that, and as a committee, we decided to install some of those twenty-five mile an hour suggested speed limit signs. They're yellow in color. In addition to some extra caution signage when you approach that intersection, whether you're on Westford Street or Dalton Road. So I believe that signage, if it has not been deployed, it's gonna be in the near future. And as the board is aware, the flashing L E D stop signs have been ordered for School of Graniteville at four intersection. And the rapid flash crosswalk signs at Fishbones, those are also in play. We're waiting for some assistance from the Griss Mill Project. And the same thing with Mill Road, rapid crosswalk signage, similar to what's been up at every, a lot of the other schools. This is behind the South Row on Mill Road. So that's really my, my, my portion here to elaborate on, and unless there's any questions, I, I think D P W might be able to expand on some of the other projects.
I just have a question on the, on the upcoming project list, the Ledge Road Bus Turnaround. Paul or D P W, what's the status of, I think you were trying to go get evaluation on the easement land taking?
Yeah, we, we had to answer a few more questions from the appraisal company last week, so we should have something shortly for them on the appraisal, obviously, at this point. Gives us the winter to go through the, the taking process, and then we gotta do a little bit of conservation permitting, and then we'll be ready for construction in the spring.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep. So I get, if the board wants, I can, I see it back to the first slide. I can just touch on a couple of these things real quick. Obviously, the work at Worthing and North with the, the age-friendly Parker Park and the realignment of the intersection is complete other than just installing some rails on the fencing. We're working on that, but we'll see how weather allows. We did a little bit of signage enhancement and painted a pedestrian X-ing. The police had gotten some complaints from some residents up on Bridge Street when they come down with the new realignment with the center closed, or the end of Westford Street closing the center, I should say. The traffic turning left onto Academy made that needed some improvements at that crosswalk, because it crosses Academy, so we did some of that. Seems to be favorable. The chief touched on replacement of some stop signs throughout the town, as well as other signs. If we see other signs are down, we're placing orders. We, we order them up, be adjusted, something as simple as a street sign or any kind of advisory sign. Mr. Chairman, you could probably go back to the, the one with the upcoming projects and stuff, if you could. Yeah, thank you. Um, so again, just following up on the stuff that, that the chief was talking about. Obviously, if you, if you're driven around, you see the Barriker and Riverneck Road intersection is in full construction, starting to take a little bit of shape. One leg of sidewalk was installed right before the first snowfall. starting to take a little bit of shape. One leg of sidewalk was installed, uh, right before the first snowfall. They've been working, that project includes the, um, covert replacement. So they've been working on setting, uh, piles and footings for that. I assume, you know, construction will probably slow a little bit here as we get into the winter. But then fully ramp back up in the spring and that's, you know, full sidewalks, both sides, the widening of that covert, eating up the intersection, uh, so it's a little safer in connection to sidewalk, uh, crossing front of workers up in. So it gets you to the, uh, traffic signal at Golden Cove, so it's safely crossing. Again, ledge and Dunstable, I've been working, um, as time allows on, trying to put a better cost to that realignment at the end of ledge road at Dunstable Road. I've worked on a little bit. I had, uh, an outside firm run some of the truck turning templates to try to get an idea of how I can possibly realign the road to allow for either a low bed trailer or a trailer dump, uh, to be able to make the left, uh, see what I need. And then I can, I can proceed on, uh, trying to put some numbers to exactly what I have to do there. I have some, some real concept level estimates, but I kind of want to narrow that down before I, uh, talk about it any further. A few years ago, uh, through an initiative, we did a, a traffic signal warrant, uh, for Richardson Road at, at Princeton Street. It hit warrants to, um, allow for a traffic signal. So we are now pursuing that, uh, into the next step with Mass DOT through the tip program. Just starting to file some initial paperwork with that. So if that gets accepted in, that'll be, uh, you know, we'll, we'll begin the design process and actual construction there could be, you know, they, they average about five years out if they get accepted into the, into the program. So, um, that initial kind of concept level project was the installation of a signal there. And then some, some sidewalk improvements getting up to the, uh, existing traffic light at, uh, Princeton and where Route Four comes in from the Rotary. Uh, and again, the chief touched on it, the LED flash and stop signs, uh, for school in Graniteville should be in, you know, within the next couple of weeks if weather allows. We can get those installed. Same thing with the, uh, rapid flash for Fishbone pushing place. Those are awarded and again, should be shortly here, I would think. The one for Mill Road did apply for the grant through the shared, the winter shared streets program. Uh, I believe that deadline for the application was a couple of weeks ago. I think they go through and start picking projects here in another week or so, it's before the end of the year. Uh, and just another project that we put on with, uh, DOT's tip program was the realignment of the Boston and Concord Road intersection. That contract was, was awarded, uh, about a couple of weeks ago. I would assume, uh, construction will probably start in the spring. They'll take the winter to do, you know, submittals and all that stuff. So they'll be ready to go in the spring. And that, the same type of thing that you see across town and many other towns, sort of the shrinking and teeing up of the intersections, you know, the sidewalks on both sides. Uh, and that project also includes the covert replacement that runs under Concord Road through the Triangle Service Center property and then under Boston. So any questions on any of that, I'd be happy to answer.
And just the final thing is the, is the vote taken on the, uh, the Board of Selectmen to set stop signs and, and traffic regulations? The final slide, but if I can just read it, run pulling it up. But now at the intersection of Worthing Street and North Road, uh, has been completed. The whole redesign there eliminated the signage that was installed to address the prior problems. One was the turnaround, which was the, uh, no left turn. If you would go into Worthing Street, the old days, prior to the traffic signal, uh, coming off the interstate, people would, would go into the right lane to avoid the queue and then go onto Worthing and then take a left to go back towards Drum Hill and that created a safety hazard. So there was no left turn signage installed years ago for that problem. And then the other issue was the limited do not enter sign in the mornings. As you would enter into Worthing Street, because people were trying to avoid the queue that was heading into the center by going down Worthing and then, uh, you know, coming back across the common. Again, the T intersection and the re-entered, the redesign of the traffic restriction, uh, in the center by the flagpole on the common, uh, has eliminated that problem. So the request is, is to keep our traffic rules and regulations, uh, orders current. And so the request from the committee is for the select board to vote to, uh, remove the do not enter and no left turn signage, uh, at the intersection of Worthing Street and North Road.
I'll make a motion to remove the do not enter and no left turn signage at the intersection of Worthing Street and North Road. You're on mute, Ken.
Sorry, maybe I picked up on that. Motion is second. All in favor, by roll call, Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item under reports and presentations is the, uh, request and presentation regarding the hazard mitigation plan and vote for, for the board to accept the plan. Melissa Joyce is on the project, um, uh, on the call this evening. She sort of brought this to a conclusion, uh, and, and, you know, has a brief presentation this evening. Just to put it in context in terms of the hazard mitigation plan, the town has always been required by FEMA and, and Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency to address the hazard mitigation plan. Uh, it would, in fact, it was one of the eligibility criteria in order to receive federal reimbursements for funding projects, um, to, to address issues caused by natural disasters and other risks. And then in more contemporary times with the municipal sustainability, uh, grants and so forth. Again, the, the issue of hazard mitigation plan falls into whole issues of climate change and so forth. And so previously I'd sent you the link to the extensive report. The last report was updated by NIMCOG, uh, about five years ago. And you're required to keep the plan current. And so this time we engaged it as part of the process that we went through to, 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 uh, do our MVP. Again, Mil- Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan. Uh, and so we've now completed the mitigation plan. Again, it's quite lengthy, but I, but I know, um, Melissa Joyce, uh, can just go through a couple of slides and just give you an overview of, of, of what work was done. And, and again, ultimately requesting a vote for acceptance. So I'll turn it over to Melissa at this point.
Thank you, Paul, and nice to see all of you. It's been a minute. I hope everyone is well. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if you want to pull up the presentation so that we can just go through it together quickly. Thanks. Okay, so again, um, thank you, Paul, for the introduction. My name is Melissa Joyce and, um, I am just going to give you a quick overview. You're welcome to peruse the hundred and fifty-page report. But here is a, um, a quick overview. So again, um, in twenty sixteen, Governor Baker issued a, um, executive order to the EEA to create two frameworks. I work mostly with the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. But in, um, that same moment, he created this hazard mitigation and climate adaptation plan that municipalities, um, again, as Paul mentioned, would have to kind of beef up their hazard mitigation, um, plans and present those to FEMA and MEMA, um, in order to be eligible for funding. So, um, again, we kind of jumped off the platform that in, um, Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, NCOG, had, um, completed, uh, in twenty fifteen. And we worked, um, with a core team, um, of folks, um, including Beals and Thomas, our consulting company, um, that we worked with for this project. I think Evan Belansky was on the core team. Many of you were present at the workshops as well as other town department heads, community leaders and other stakeholders. And basically what the group did was get together and, um, in conjunction with some data, based on weather, climate, um, created a list of, um, priorities and actions based on those priorities, um, to work towards to mitigate our impact, um, from climate change. So if you could, um, advance this slide, please. So as you can see, um, there's been a lot of back and forth. Drafts were submitted to MEMA and FEMA. We received their comments and updated, um, our drafts accordingly. We have finally received, um, approval from both agencies and, um, pending your adoption. This evening, we'll be able to, um, be eligible for FEMA's hazard mitigation funding to address, potentially address some of these, um, needs through those mechanisms. If you could advance this slide, please. So, um, not super surprising here. The highest ranked hazards in our region and our area for the town of Chelmsford include severe storms, flooding, extreme temperature, wind and pollution. These are kind of events that we are probably somewhat used to as New Englanders, but, um, nonetheless have to be prepared, uh, from a municipal standpoint in order to, um, proactively address some of these, um, in our community. So if we could move to the next slide, please. The top priorities, um, that be this group, um, across the two days. I'm sure you probably, uh, remember being in that room. I actually completed this process formally for the town of Natick. So I, though I was not here in Chelmsford, I do know what the process looked like. So, um, thank you for being involved. It wasn't always super easy, but, um, I think a lot of good came out of it. So again, the priorities were install, um, to install a generator at Adams Library, complete an assessment of, uh, local infrastructure, especially as it relates to, um, flooding. And then creating an inventory of facilities, um, with generators and the need for, um, additional infrastructure around, um, backup electricity at some of our sites. If you could advance this slide, please. There were a number of priority actions, high priority actions and medium priority actions. And so these are kind of items that we're addressing ongoing in many cases. But also, again, as I mentioned, um, now have the opportunity or after this adoption, we'll have the opportunity to apply for funding. So you can see that they really range from kind of, um, soft social communication, ideas to actually, um, conducting studies and, um, and dedicating funding for different, um, projects that will help with bank stabilization, increasing, uh, tree cover, landscaping, um, impervious surface, um, those kind of actions. And if you could advance again, please. This list is long. Um, and there's more information in the report as to, uh, where we are at with some of these items. But you can see that, um, the third item down, hire a town social worker and enhance volunteer-based programs for vulnerable populations. The town did that in twenty nineteen when they hired General Lanson. So, um, you know, we're, we're doing, um, we're kind of achieving some of these items on an ongoing basis. Many of the town departments have social media accounts and are creating relationships, um, with residents in that way. And, um, you can see that some of these items, like constructing a boat ramp at Hart Pond for emergency response are very practical, um, items that are kind of on the other end of this, the spectrum when it comes to infrastructure as opposed to kind of the social, um, aspect of that. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions. I will say that this is a hugely collaborative effort and I appreciate the work of all the departments. From, um, planning to building to the police department, fire department, DPW. I'm sure I missed one, but, um, very collaborative process. And so if I can't answer your question tonight, I'm sure that I can get that information for you, but I'm happy to give it a shot. And otherwise, um, if there are no questions, I'm, um, happy to turn it back over to Paul and select, um, or request, uh, a select board vote tonight.
Thank you, Melissa. I, I have a question. You, you listed the top three priorities and then there were other things. And you said that once this plan is approved, we can apply for funding to help fund some of those other things. Are those top three priorities, install the generator, assess bridges, culverts and dams and create an inventory of facilities with generators? Are those things that are also eligible for external funding? Paul, I thought that was the generator on the capital?
Yeah, the generators on the, generals, generators on the capital list and was discussed last Thursday and will be considered this coming Thursday. Some items are FEMA eligible. Let me explain what FEMA eligibility is. When you have a natural disaster such as a hurricane or a major flooding and so forth event, obviously FEMA and, and Federal Emergency Management Agency and Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency provide immediate assistance. Uh, generally they cover seventy-five percent of the cost, you know, for response and, and cleanup and so forth to, to an event. Whether it was flooding down by the Merrimack River or, you know, um, a, a major winter storm, for example, even those. But in addition to that, following those events, uh, the federal government or the Federal Emergency Management Agency offers grant funding to basically, it's, it's the act of prevention and mitigation. Uh, and so those are the type of projects that we would apply for. So items typically like a generator would not qualify for that type, that type of matter. What did qualify, uh, and we were under the previous mitigation plan is the Williamsburg Riverbank Stabilization Project, uh, which is essentially completed. And we're, we're in the final stage of getting FEMA reimbursement for those type of projects. So those are the type of projects that we would look towards i- in the future, ones that are FEMA eligible. And they generally tend to be, um, construction related. Uh, and, and generally the federal government through the emergency, federal emergency management agency pays about seventy-five percent of those projects cost.
Thank you.
So Paul, do you need an approval?
Yeah, yeah, we need, we need the board to, to accept the approval of the two thousand twenty update to the hazard mitigation plan.
I will motion to accept the two, the twenty twenty update to the hazard mitigation plan as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, by roll call, Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, so that brings us to item seven, Diversity, Racial Equality, Inclusion Committee, November seventeenth meeting incident. Paul, do you want to explain how this showed up on the, the agenda? Was this a request from someone?
Yeah, the, you have correspondence in, in your packet, uh, that regarding the request from Frank Good, to, uh, ask the board to, uh, become aware of the situation as well as in his request, he was seeking the removal of, of a member from the committee. In addition to your correspondence is the apology, uh, from the member a- as well as the, uh, immediate response from the committee chair and, and vice chair. And also I did happen to watch both then the member meeting as well as the committee's last meeting. And, uh, and I think the committee addressed it at, I know they, they addressed it at their last meeting. And again, I, the sense I have is that they seek, they've learned from that lesson. They're, they're very mindful of their, uh, use of words and, and language moving forward. And, and again, I think they're hoping to, you know, avoid this from, uh, from happening in the future.
Okay, anybody want to speak to that?
Um, I'll, I'll just make a, a few comments. Um, I, I, you know, I appreciate that, um, that Brian Petro Roy sent such a, a quick apology once he realized, uh, that he, how his words were, uh, in- interpreted. So I give him a lot of credit for that. And I, and, you know, I think, I know when we set up this committee, we wanted a lot of diversity on it. And I think we've gotten that. I don't think there's anybody, um, that's, that's not said something. Maybe in heat of the moment, maybe just off the cuff and not immediately regretted it or soon after regretted it. So, um, it's, it's not unusual and, and I think we should, um, you know, give a little leeway as far as that goes. And my philosophy on committee appointments is, is And my philosophy on committee appointments is, is to let them do their work without a lot of oversight from this board. And I know we've, we've talked about that a couple of times and, and I feel that we are letting them do their work. And from what I've seen and heard, they, they are doing, doing a good job. I think it's, as Paul said, they've handled it appropriately. It's, it's kind of ironic because this is the type of thing that probably they would maybe come up with some suggestions on what, what not to do in a situation like this. But I kind of agree with what, you know, John Teberty said earlier in his meeting that I would not be in favor of removing Brian Petro Roy from that committee. He understands that, that he made a mistake and he's apologized for it. So I would, and I would be in favor of letting the committee continue with their work.
George.
Well, I mean, you know, I know people make mistakes, but and you know, the part of it about the, the place needs to have their feet held to the fire, you know, and all places bastards. You know, Chief Spiny has appeared many times in front of us and he was asked when we were doing the All Blacks Lives Matter and a couple of the other marches in town, how, how many racial complaints he's had over the six years as chief? He's had none. So I mean, for them, you know, to, to make a statement like this. And, and maybe he meant no harm, you know, but, but statements alone, you know, they're very hateful, you know, and decisive in nature. But you know, I, I just, you know, I mean, we didn't sign the proclamation for the police department. I mean, I, I, and that's, I'm not, I'm not criticizing anybody on the board. I'm just stating a fact and I just think the police department does a heck of a job. I know I'm away a lot and I depend on them to take care of my family. And I know if I'm out there and he's, I want somebody to protect us. So, you know, I, I don't want them to feel like they're, they're not appreciated by people. So, and hopefully everybody can learn from this if that's the way we're going to do it. They can learn from making this mistake. Don't, don't make these type of statements because, you know, it's the perception that the police is radical and, and, you know, I, I think they're anything but that. And I think we have a great police department. I think we have great, you know, fire department and everything else as well. But I'm just, I, I just feel, I feel bad for them. And, and hopefully everybody will learn a lesson from this, but I, I, it's not something just to take lightly, but we have to move on, I guess. It, it actually, it, it, it wipes out the validity of, of some of the other things that the committee is doing. Because people are going to judge him on that, judge the committee on, on one or two statements like good work. I mean, I watched the chairman and I thought he did a very good job, a couple of meetings I watched. And, and I thought he did an outstanding job. I thought the people were very well behaved except for this. But you know, what they say, one bad apple can, you know, so, and, and I'm not referring to the person as a bad apple. I guess maybe one bad statement, one statement taken out of context can throw everything off kilter. And so, and again, I'm, I, I don't want the police to feel that that that's the way the majority of the people in town think. It's only my opinion. Okay.
As you're, as you're talking, George, it's dawning on me that for anybody watching may not be aware of what was said or happened. And we did get a, a phone request from Frank Good to read his email and the record. Should we read the entire email in? It's a couple of paragraphs here. Virginia, would you mind, I guess, reading that?
Well, just before you do, I will say that I also got a, an email, I think we all did, from the, one of the former police chiefs from before. And he was extremely upset and he said it was like somebody, you know, in a jury calling in a defendant and saying, bring in the guy who just robbed the bank. So in other words, bring in the guilty party. So I don't know, I think you, you probably know the letter I'm referring to it. But it was, it was former chief and he was sticking up for the department that he, you know, that he once supervised. And, and he observes them still very closely. And I did get three or four people that, that sent me emails saying what, you know, what's going on. And they, they weren't happy, but so that's why I guess maybe I got upset, but.
George, I would just like to say something too, since, since George, since you brought up about the proclamation that we had considered back in August. And, and you'll recall that I was uncomfortable with some of the terminology on that and offered to edit it, which I did. And I expected it to be on the agenda at our next meeting and it was not. So it wasn't for lack of effort that we have not done a proclamation.
No, when I made that statement, Pat, I said, I'm not blaming anybody on the committee for whatever, whatever. I mean, that, that isn't the reason. I was just saying, you know, along with this other situation, we didn't, we didn't give, we didn't show support. And that was something else.
I disagree with that, George, which, George, that's, that's absolutely wrong what you just said. We didn't give support because I said during that meeting, three or four times that I supported the, the, this, you know, the Chelsa Police Department.
That's the way it was construed by this, this person is what I'm saying. Okay. Maybe it worded incorrectly, but I, I mean, we didn't give, in the end, we didn't give them a proclamation, so.
But it wasn't for, for my lack of trying because I did do the, I did make edits as I said that I would. And I submitted it and expected it to be on the agenda and it was not.
Okay.
I can't, you know.
Virginia, do you have that, do you have an email?
You want me to read Frank's email, the apology or both or?
Well, I'm looking at it. He said, please read this into the public records.
Okay. This is from Francis Good Jr. dated Thursday, December 3rd. Town manager Cohen and members of the select board, as a lifelong resident of Chelmsford and a 27 year member of the Chelmsford Police Department, I am deeply disturbed and saddened by comments made by a member of the newly formed and appointed Diversity, Racial Equity and Inclusion Committee. After just watching the November 17th meeting, I was shocked when committee member Brian Petro Roy, while discussing this committee's approach to working and participating with the police department stated, I am coming from the ACAB, all cops are bastards side of the equation. And stated that, quote, it's a healthy assumption to go in with, and if they can prove us wrong, then all the power to them. But I would like them to actually prove us wrong. Please notice that he used the word us twice. In that context, he was referring to the entire committee. Once this statement was made, the entire committee sat silent and sadly not one member condemned the statement or position. This includes committee member Tricia Dursis, who is a fellow town employee, employed as town clerk. Mr. Dursis knows the vast majority of the members of the police department through her work in town, yet chose not to question or condemn that statement. It is appalling to me as a resident of this town that a person appointed to this committee can publicly make that statement while representing the town of Chelmsford. How is there anything, quote, healthy about making the assumption that, quote, all cops are bastards? Ironically, just prior to Mr. Petro Roy's statement, another committee member spoke about not creating, quote, adversarial loops and how they are counterproductive to the task at hand. However, that is precisely what Mr. Petro Roy was doing and that other committee member had no comment about his statement after the fact. Could you imagine if a member of the Chelmsford Police Department made a statement that all people we interact with are bad? And they need to prove to us they are not, or all people are guilty until they prove they are not. Imagine if we further broke it down to race, ethnicity, religion, sexual preference or identity. We would be terminated immediately and rightfully so. These comments made by Mr. Petro Roy are hate speech and are completely intolerable. His prejudiced opinion of the dedicated members of our police department cannot and should not be allowed any further. I am quite certain this behavior was not the intent when you created this committee. Only you can fix this and make this right. In my opinion, there is absolutely no way Mr. Petro Roy could possibly continue with his role on this committee and owes every member of the police department a public apology. The committee continued on to speak about building a partnership with the police department. Do any of them actually believe that Mr. Petro Roy's hate speech and the rest of the committee member silence provide a catalyst to achieving that partnership? In fact, it flies in the face of what this committee is attempting to accomplish. Perhaps these committee members would be well served by first doing their due diligence and acting, actually looking up and reading the Chelmsford Police Department's mission statement, which is based on and centered around a partnership with the community towards the police department. In my personal opinion, there is no doubt that many people in town have been empowered to have negative feelings towards the police department by the select board's failure to agree to the simple proclamation of support the police department and its members. I ask you, what message do you think that sent? Let's not forget that the vast majority of the members of our police department are residents of this town. We are neighbors and friends. We raise our families in this town. Our kids go to school with everyone else's kids. Our families and specifically our children should not be subjected to this hate merely because their father or mother chose a career in law enforcement. I thank you for attention to this matter and would gladly speak with any of you further if you desire. Please feel free to pass this email along to all the members of the committee. If I had their email addresses, I would have done it myself. Respectfully, Francis Good Jr.
I, I think since, since he requested an apology, Mr. Petro Roy's apology should be read in response.
That's fair. Yep. Do you want to do it, Virginia? You want me to do it?
Um, I don't, I don't mind doing it. Are we going to read Mr. Hicks's note also? Do we, I mean, if we're reading all these.
That's everybody else's call. I mean, that's, that's, we need to read the apology. I don't have a problem with that at all. So if you want, I can read the apology, just to give you a break from doing the reading.
Okay.
This came in Friday, December 4th at 5:15 PM. And it's addressed to Chief Spiny and Officer Good. My name is Brian Petro Roy. I'm 42 years old. I've lived and worked in Chelmsford for the majority of my life and made a serious mistake. At the Chelmsford Diversity, Racial Equality and Inclusion Committee meeting on November 17th, 2020, during discussion about how we wanted to approach a series of conversations with Chief Spiny, I attempted to state my position on how I view the police as a general institution in America. In doing so, I chose to use a phrase I had seen on the internet as shorthand for my thoughts on the subject while being unaware of its historical significance, association with radical culture and status as being named a hate symbol for the Anti-Defamation League, as a hate symbol by the Anti-Defamation League. This was a short sighted, ignorant and just plain wrong decision on my part. The words I used were insensitive and hurtful and I apologize unreservedly for the pain that I have caused. I will make sure to choose my words more carefully in the future and more to the point to make sure that any words I choose to say in the future committee meetings are mine. In that vein, I want to take this chance to say that I do not hate the police. In fact, I have never heard a negative, I have never had a negative interaction with any police officer anywhere in my entire life and especially none from the Chelmsford Police. I look forward to the opportunity, to having the opportunity for the D-Rick to forge a partnership with the Chelmsford Police Department as we move forward into 2021 and beyond. My deepest apologies once again to the entire CPD. Words have power and I was too careless with mine. Sincerely, Brian Petro Roy. Just, I mean, I don't know if you want to read the, you know, we have received, I think, three emails from the different board people, basically either apologizing or promising to be more on point as a board member and, and working to make sure they don't trip any further. And that they were going to, you know, avoid certain language and, and check all their attitudes and make sure they were all responsible going forward. Virginia, you have any direct comments or do you?
I guess I, I just have some things I'd like to keep in mind as this committee moves forward. When, when, when any committee member in Chelmsford is sworn in, that committee member pledges to execute their duties, quote, faithfully and impartially. And whether the comment was made out of ignorance, I don't think you use words like bastard impartially, regardless of whether or not you know where they come from. I don't feel that any committee in town, including this one, is a political platform. And the other thing I just really like the committee to keep in mind is that the committee's name is not the Racial Equity Committee. It is the Diversity, Racial Equity and Inclusion Committee. And diversity and inclusion issues to me reach far beyond race. I, you know, our school systems demand that our children operate from a premise of respect. And I think we should demand no less from that, from the adults who serve the town. I, I really suspect that there's probably not an organization or a household in this community that has not dealt with some issue regarding diversity, inclusion or respect. And I think that our police department and our residents deserve better. They don't deserve assumptions that require them to prove themselves, but they deserve assumptions that are based on respect and the valuing of individuals and organizations unless they give a reason to believe otherwise. And I just, I, I really believe that whether we are employees or volunteers, the execution of our duties in the town need to come from that foundation of impartiality that we pledge to execute them with, in a foundation of respect and open mindedness to grow and learn and also to help others grow and learn. And I personally want to thank our police department. I think we are very blessed in this town to have the department that we do.
Okay. So I will hopefully button this up with these final comments. It's what I have to say about the meeting on November 17th that I watched. My feelings similar to other members of this board, the words expressed at that night by Mr. Petro Roy. Were divisive, very disrespectful, and I hope for the board, for their committee's sake, that they're not a symptom of a greater illness, of hostility and negative feelings towards our specific police department. Mr. Petro Roy said right in his apology, if I can recall this correctly. In fact, I've never had a negative interaction with any police officer anywhere in my entire life and especially none with the Chelmsford Police. To that point, we have one of the highest qualified departments in the state of Massachusetts. And Massachusetts is some of the highest qualified police departments in the country. So if you're in Chelmsford, I feel we truly have the best of the best. So I only hope your words, Mr. Petro Roy, do not repeat the great work that this board hopes your committee will accomplish. I hope the next time that something like this comes up, we can keep control of the emotional side of it and look at the facts when talking about the Chelmsford Police Department. We understand that none of you have served on a board before, so that leaves me believing there's a certain level of experience here. You have the town clerk in that meeting standing on and she should be able to guide you with her experience and advice. And I urge you to use her for that. With that, is everybody okay? Can we move on? All right, Paul, we'll go to the bid awards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One item for bid awards this evening, it's the DPW seasonal services and materials bid award. Again, this is done every calendar year. In the packet, you have the last year bid quote prices. You also have the list of bidders and the prices as well as the low bidder identified in each category from crack ceiling to traffic markings, vertical curbing and paving. And I would ask that the board approve the bid award as presented.
I will make a motion to approve the DPW annual services and materials bid awards as presented. I will make a motion to approve the DPW annual services and materials bid awards as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of second all in favor by roll call. Pat?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Virginia?
Hi.
And I vote aye.
Thank you, uh, board members. All right. By report, I've got several items and we'll try to go through them rather efficiently. The first one, a- again, and sort of coming, coming over from a previous meeting. The town, uh, since the two weeks ago from your last meeting, uh, we've engaged Paul McKinley, who is a licensed site professional from Weston and Sampson Engineers. And Steve Yonley has sort of been leading the town's efforts on this, along with our town engineer, Christina Papadopoulos. And so I'll ask Steve to come back into the meeting and just give you an update on the meeting that was held last week with the DEP regarding this issue.
Yep. Uh, thank you, Paul. Uh, we had a couple of different conference calls, one just with Weston and Sampson, then we had a larger one, uh, towards the end of last week. Excuse me, Thursday, uh, with the, uh, folks from DEP. Just so we understand and the folks at Weston and Sampson understand what exactly DEP is going to be looking for. And what, how they want us to handle this. Uh, so it was a very good call. Uh, we did some additional reporting. I know Courtney sent some information over to DEP today. She had an additional call. Um, we had, uh, basically what had to happen is we had to call and report the findings to DEP and that starts the process. So. We have sort of a roadmap. We have some initial reporting we need to do. And then we have, uh, the clock is ticking. We have sixty days to develop a plan on how we're going to proceed. And a lot of that is to determine if, um, the PFAS that was found is solely coming from our site or if it's coming from an adjacent site or upstream groundwater wise. So there'll be some, a series of additional wells more than likely drilled and sampled. Uh, there'll be a lot of fact finding with neighboring properties, obviously our own property, the water district property, et cetera. So that ball is rolling, um, now as we speak. So. I mean, that's just a brief update. That's the information I have to date. So as the process continues, we certainly can update the board.
I'm sorry, Steve, I, I lost you a little bit at the beginning. How does the license, the LSP get assigned? Is that?
What do you mean get assigned? We, we reached out to the, um, the folks at Weston and Sampson.
Okay.
Touch with the, with, uh, Paul McKinley, who was the LSP as well as a lot of their geotech folks. So they have their own team that's going to be working with us. Paul will be handling this. Yep.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions than this, we, we can move on to the next item. Those requests from the prior meeting regarding the revised affordable housing plan, that production inventory and Evan Blansky, our community development director, will, uh, will, uh, walk you through this. He does have a, uh, presentation that shows the numbers that's in your packet this evening.
Uh, good evening, uh, board members. Uh, so I was in front of you back in August, uh, with this, uh, with this, uh, projection sheet, uh, what is in front of you.
Do you want that up on the screen, Evan?
Sure.
Do you have it?
Uh, is that the one that's titled S H I?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Let me just get this one in two seconds. Is that the right one, Evan?
Uh, yes. So, uh, this is, uh, December twenty, uh, update. Um. Couple items that I want to, uh, bring to your attention, uh, in the first block. Uh, where it, where it indicates, uh, ten point zero two percent. Uh, that assumes that all of these projects, um, are eligible for the, uh, state, um, housing inventory. However, as some of you know, uh, there are a variety of thresholds that DHCD uses in order to officially count, uh, units within projects. Several of these projects have fallen off the official state inventory. The most recent state inventory, um, that we have received has the town at a, at about nine point seven five percent. Uh, so the, the official number is always a, a slightly moving target based upon when projects were approved, when building permits were issued and when occupancy, uh, has been obtained. Uh, but for this exercise, we assume that, uh, all of the projects that the, uh, zoning board has approved and those that are advancing, either they have a foundation or a building permit, um, is counted. On the next, um. Uh, block down. Um. That has, uh, the only change there is I've added, uh, two thirty-six Groton Road. I neglected to add, uh, the twenty-four units to the sixty-four unit count. So that would, that should be eighty-eight total units. Which brings the, a total non-SHI, uh, total unit count of four hundred and nine units. Which adjusts the nine point seven six down to nine point seven four. So we have a, uh, as of right now, our best, um. To date, uh, projection is again nine point seven four percent, which, uh, mirrors very nicely with the, uh, with, with the states. And we have a, uh, delta deficit of, uh, approximately forty, uh, units. On the next, uh, section of the analysis was future projections. What I've done here is I've, uh, removed UMass West. As you recall, uh, the initial conversations were four hundred plus units. I've also removed the hundred and twenty-four units, uh, that were, uh, identified in the most recent uh, plant production, affordable housing plan at ninety-three Brick Hill Road. Those were both intended to be, um, rental projects, which, um, each unit, uh, would have counted towards our subsidized housing inventory. I've also removed, uh, the twenty-four units at ten Technology Drive. We've received, uh, notice, uh, within the last two weeks that that project has been sold to a, uh, manufacturer who will likely build a, uh, facility there. So it certainly will not be housing of any type. Um. And then if you were to, uh, project, uh, those, uh, numbers out. Uh, we would estimate that when the two thousand twenty census is released. That we would dip to a nine point four five percent with a deficit delta of around eighty-three units. So that is the, the updated, uh, projections based upon, uh, best available information and some, uh, I guess reasonable, uh, assumptions. I should also say that of the two hundred and ninety units at one ninety-nine, go on River Neck Road. Those easily, uh, could be removed as part of this conversation. Um. It's been some time since we've had a, uh, since we have had a discussion with them. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, the lack of soar capacity, uh, has sent them back to the drawing board. Uh, we have not heard, uh, from them since. But I'd be happy to, uh, answer any questions that you may have, uh, on this update.
So if, if the two ninety at River Neck get removed, does that help the percentage?
Yeah, it shouldn't, uh, it shouldn't change, um, the calculation.
Okay. Evan, is this something that you put on the planning board agenda to make sure they're aware of where we are for the current state?
Uh, we certainly could. That would, um, that would be a informative update, uh, for the planning board. The last, the planning board, uh, discussed affordability. Um, they were under the assumption, one, correctly, that we were under s- certification, which expired uh, in October, uh, and two, that we were at ten percent. And at the time, uh, as you recall, uh, that was a, that was an accurate statement, particularly with the, um, seven Gorham. Which, uh, last time the planning board, uh, had, had, uh, discussed, um, affordable housing and achieving ten percent. Seven Gorham was a, was a hundred percent rental project. Uh, and as you can see, that, that's a loss of approximately, um, forty units as well. So yes, I will intend to, uh, bring this on to the next planning board agenda, uh, to update them accordingly.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions, comments, suggestions? Okay. All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Evan.
Thanks, Evan. Take care.
All right. Thank you. The next item on my report is the Chelmsford Public Schools HBAC assessment. Since the last meeting, the report came in, I provided it to you in, in, in this, you know, gr- great detail. In this packet this evening, you have a cover memo, um, from Kathleen Cannavan, uh, our public facilities manager. This item is going to be discussed at tomorrow evening's, uh, school committee meeting. And I'll be on the call of that, along with Gary Persicetti, our public works director. Gary is on the call this evening and I'm going to turn it over to Gary to just provide an overview in terms of the work that's been done to date. And also the phases of response that the town has going forward as outlined in the, in this, and Melissa Joyce is also with him. She's sort of been the person boots on the ground in the school buildings, you know, working with the superintendent, the Brian Curly, the, the, their school, the facilities manager. And, and again, why this is of critical importance is, is this is the issue of air quality and ventilation in the schools. Uh, again, we're, we're currently in a hybrid, uh, model of education, uh, which students and faculty and administrators are in the building as well as support staff on a daily basis. So with this, I'll turn it over to Gary and, and I'm sure with Melissa's assistance of the three of us can answer the questions about what's transpired, the plan going ahead and, uh, and ultimately where this brings us.
Gary, you hear it?
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Sorry.
Yeah. Yep.
Good evening. Um, yes, uh, to let you know where we're at is, um, with the COVID relation to schools and, uh, fact that things have been changing, the biggest thing that they've wanted to make sure is that all schools are providing the right air exchanges for the rooms. And the biggest thing that came out of this more than anywhere else is when you have rooms that are called interior rooms with no windows. That's what I recommend, um, that you bring in a, um, air purifier. So that has been done in all the rooms in the schools, all eight of them that have those types of areas. What we did is we hired a, uh, TAB contractor and a consultant and we did twenty-five percent of the school district, all the schools. And out of those results, um, came some recommendations and how to move forward. Um, the best way to move forward is going to be to continue by doing the other seventy-five percent of the rooms with, uh, another TAB contract and the engineer. And then you ascertain your HBAC management company that does, uh, controls. And we go back and we re- recalculate. Um, the main reasons for this is to make sure that you, you're getting your air exchanges and that, um, you're filtering your ear in and out. So your exhaust fans are part of that, along with your units themselves. And, um, at this point in time, um, we're, we're above, I, I believe it's, is it seventy-two percent, Melissa, of, um, the rooms? And we want to get the rest brought up. So it is, it is going to take time to do this. And we want to get started on this and, and continue forward to make sure that we're meeting the demands and the needs, um, of the schools. Any questions so far? The. There are, there is a spreadsheet in there. I don't know if anyone has, uh, taken a look at the, um, school enhancements, but it, it was broken down in three phases. Phase one is what has currently been done. Phase two is the next phase that we are going into. And then, uh, phase three would be items that need to be added to capital.
Are any of these eligible for outside funding sources?
From what I am told, the answer is no. Um, they, the only thing that maybe, and, and we did at the beginning with some of the TAB, uh, the rebalance and work, that's about it. So we are looking into that right now. But the actual, um, repairs to it and the controls and all of that is not. TAB is because it, it is the air exchanges that they're trying to produce.
What, what we don't know is what federal money may come that there, again, the, we know the Congress is in the administration of Washington is actively pursuing uh, COVID monies that may be available to municipal and state governments. And obviously we would look to that as a potential funding source. But in the meantime, we're, we're, we're basically, you know, stepping it up and, and putting the, the dedicated resources to addressing, you know, the issues that were identified in the, uh, the survey and then going back now and examining the entire system and making sure that everything is functioning. You know, fully. Um, and so I have also, just so the board knows, I've also notified the finance committee and provided them with a copy of this report. Because obviously this was not foreseen in the typical normal operating budget for the town. And so, you know, we, we may at some point, uh, be look towards the reserve fund for the town to fund the, you know, uh, in- increased, uh, repairs and, and ongoing, uh, you know, uh, response into the schools. Um, and, and then they said, as Gary noted earlier, for, we'll also look towards the town meeting for, um, additional support as well as the capital investment long term. I mean, what, what has to be born in mind is we're applying today's air exchange and ventilation standards to facilities that were built, you know, seventy years ago, in the case of the McCarthy School. I mean, you're basically a nineteen sixty facility sixty years ago. Uh, and then the other schools were all built in, into the sixties and early seventies. Um, and so we're, you know, we're making sure, um, that, that again, the paramount objective is to provide a healthy environment for the occupants in the buildings. To, you know, to make sure that that's, uh, you know, a, a, a good environment going forward. Uh, and, and as we noted, you know, we, we're, we're, we're doing what needs to take place, uh, as Gary noted, in terms of air purifiers and individual classrooms, uh, and, and wherever needed, uh, in order to make this effective, uh, you know, for occupancy. Cause that's, that's, we owe that to, to our facilities, uh, occup- occupants and users. But also in the bigger picture, it's a less expensive problem than obviously if we were, if we were looking at the cost for, for new facilities. And so again, this is sort of represents the inta- the town's ongoing commitment to maintaining the, the school infrastructure that we have because although money will be spent, um, the buildings are solid. Uh, and, and again, we're making sure and, and even at last week's capital meeting, there was a discussion of another HVAC investment in the gymnasiums and and cafeterias to making sure that we're meeting the long-term, uh, capital investments going forward.
And I would also just like to add too, and Paul, um, I may have missed this at the beginning, but if anyone is interested in tuning in tomorrow to the school committee meeting, Jess Farber from C M T A, who is the engineering firm that undertook the initial, um, assessment study with us, is doing a presentation. So he is going to walk through it kind of step by step. There's a lot of, uh, data there. So, um, if you're interested in digging into that report a little bit more, um, that would be a great introduction. As opposed to trying to dig through it yourself. Um, so that's tomorrow, um, at the school committee meeting.
Yeah. And, and he was on a call last week when the report came out with, with, with Melissa and Dr. Lang and representatives of the building principals, as well as the school unions, you know, we're, we're trying to be fully inclusive and make everyone aware. I, I just want to point out for perspective, I don't want to give the impression that we're in some kind of a, uh, extraordinary circumstance. I, I, I think in my perspective on this and, and the discussions I've had during this process, we're in relatively good shape. It's just that all situations in all communities, there, there, there's, there's work that, that needs to take place in order to meet the extraordinary, uh, demands of the COVID pandemic. Also what this reflects upon, if you may recall, when we, when we did the upgrades a few years back. Also what this reflects upon, if you may recall, when we, when we did the upgrades a few years back as part of the energy management performance contract, there were some issues of climate temperature that were expressed at the time. And those were addressed by adjusting the temperature of the inflow air as well as the air circulation and air exchange. Again, in this environment, much like we're seeing students in outdoor classrooms and outdoor breaks, we're going to, we're going to have to go back to that environment in terms of making sure that, you know, that the air safety and ventilation is paramount over the perhaps air temperature in the room, which, which as you know, was, was, was a concern that we, we dealt with a few years back. So again, we're, we're trying to, you know, bring everybody on board and again, address all areas of the issue. And obviously that work will take place even during the break that comes up over the holidays. And again, you know, when it will really putting all of our efforts in. Unfortunately, we have the contract in place that allows us to do that with our HVAC controls and maintenance person, service personnel.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Gary. Thanks, Paul.
All right. Thank you, Gary and Melissa. The next item is the human resources staffing survey and powers and Sullivan audit, audit management letter. You may recall when we had the financial audit a month, last month in November, we received some areas of improvement by the auditors that were non-material, meaning they weren't a material financial weakness of the town. But were areas in terms of housekeeping that the town needed to move forward with and address in the years ahead. Following that meeting, the human resources director, myself and the town accountant and finance director got together. We developed a plan to move forward in terms of addressing the issues that were highlighted in the management letter. And with the expectation that they will not appear in next year's management letter, aside from the fact that the items were, were addressed and that we're, we're, we're in compliance with good practices. The only thing that I did add and I shared with the board is also since that time, back on November 25th, I received a, a survey results from the Westford Town Manager, who was contacting neighboring comparable communities to Westford, which Chelmsford was one in terms of their, their HR staffing in, in the town and on the school side. And I shared this with you as a board in order to just give you a perspective in terms of a, a point that I've often raised in the past about how amazed I am as town manager of how, what we accomplished, given the limited resources that we have staffing wise comparison to other communities. And I think this demonstrates another area, you know, when you look at the six communities that are part of the survey, we are the only community that has a HR staff of one, which is our HR director, without an assistant and so forth. And although we are, we're, we're adequately staffed on the school side in terms of HR, on the town side, it's been lighter. And that's historically been the case. And we're fortunate that we have a, you know, a decades-long employee in that position. And Jean Parzeli has done a great job. And I just wanted, you know, again, illustrate what, what I said in the past and also assure the board that we are actively addressing these, these, these issues. And again, with, with the accounting office, and we will have those issues addressed in time, which basically will be six months from now, because there'll be the end of the fiscal year, just over six months. So that when the audit report comes in next fall, this item will, this item will be satisfactorily addressed.
Paul, on the survey, Chelmsford didn't fill in the number of employees for the town or the school. What are, what are our numbers?
If you look in the handout, Ken wants to put that up, but we, we filled that in to, because when I responded to the survey, it was in a written form. It wasn't in a survey format form that of which you, 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 which we, I received the results. If, if Ken wants to just put that up, then the numbers are there. And you can see that one sheet that we're, 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 on the town side, we have 358 employees. And you can see that, that pretty much is in the ballpark with what you see for the comparable communities of, of Westford, where we're obviously greater than Westford, where less than Needham, where less than Arlington and sort of be much less than Winchester. And then on the school side, again, our, our numbers are greater than Westford, greater than Needham. The, the, there's no other information from those other communities. And again, the RHR director provides the full range of benefits for all employees and retirees. I mean, she is the, she is the stop for school and general government retiree benefit issues. And so we, we augment her with, you know, senior work program participant and sort of getting some of the mailings out that went out this month for the change in Medicare and Medicare Supplement Plan rates that change with the calendar year. And again, we're going to address this, these issues in the audit management letter with some staffing resources that are currently utilized in the accounting office.
Thank you. I mean, that was the part of the clarification I was seeking when you said that you were addressing the staffing issues. I mean, it wasn't clear whether you were like trying to go hire people or you're, you're going to help augment the HR function with people from the accounting office to answer the personnel file and the insurance database findings from the audit. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but, but, but let me make it clear, our accounting office is also
I know.
is also low staffed. And so what we have is we have a retired former employee, full-time employee, who's been assisting the accounting office with some issues in terms of annual 1099 and other reporting issues. Now that we're past that period, we're going to keep that employee on and have her assist with, with Jeannie in, in terms of these HR issues, which again, do interact with the accounting office. So basically we've identified a retired employee who we're going to retain, you know, for a longer period now than was anticipated in order to address this, the, the issues identified in the management letter as, as good accounting practices for HR tracking services.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Paul? Paul, do you want to say anything else?
No, no, that's it. Thank you. Again, quickly getting towards the end of my report, the next one is I really want to put out a good news story regarding the recent outreach we had from the Sterling Corporation. Within, since your last meeting, we had an outreach almost two weeks ago by Sterling Corporation on a Friday afternoon in which they, they were, were really seeking to step up and, and, and address the COVID-19 response regarding the distribution of the therapeutic drug, Redistipir. And, and they really needed to do some modifications to their facility in a narrow timeframe, which is typical in, in this type of response in terms of getting things going by January. And I immediately reached out to, responded to the inquiry and also reached out to our fire chief Gary Ryan and our building commissioner Sean Shanahan. On a late Friday afternoon, I'm talking after three o'clock, they immediately responded. And then by that Monday afternoon, as, as was noted, you know, we're, you know, got in touch in person and on site with the, the requests that were needed. And, and I think it was just, I just, you know, quote the, you know, from Josh Bruce to the director of new business, he just, I'll just read the one sentence. "The professionalism of attention from Chief Ryan and Sean Shanahan were nothing short of amazing. They could not have possibly reacted any faster than they did." And, and they noted that Sean even hand-delivered their permit and that they couldn't be a prouder member of the Chelmsford community and so forth. So again, not only is because of the nature of what was involved, but I think it just speaks to the, the commitment of the staff in the town towards addressing the concerns of our business community, but also in this real timely case in terms of being able to respond during this COVID emergency. And then the next item I have is
I was just going to say, I think that's two compliments we've received, you know, because we had that other one on Friday. So great job by everybody on those. On the efforts that they're, they're doing to get the business community, you know, keeping on track or as best they can with what's going on in the country today.
Yeah. And, and while I think of Lisa Maroni, our business development director, she, she's got an outreach today also about some small business administration assistance, particularly to the minority community that she, again, is continuing her outreach again, because we recognize the challenges there confronting businesses during the economic fallout. And then the, the next bit of good news, and again, employee recognition is, is, I just want to point out the efforts by our council and aging director, Deb Sirianni, during the truncated and rapid state budget process that just, you know, finally the state got a budget adopted since our last meeting, the governor signed most of it last Friday. But during that process, she worked with Senator Michael Barrett's office and secured $25,000 earmark and funding to be expended by the council and aging for senior food security to meet the nutritional needs of elders. So I just wanted to recognize Deb's efforts and also those of Senator Barrett. And, and I did speak to Representative Golden late last week as well and, and express my appreciation for his support on the House side, you know, for the town. And then the final item under my report is, is sort of a reminder and a request that less than a month from now, in four weeks, on Monday, January 11th at 7:00 PM is the scheduled budgetary meeting between the select board, the school committee and the finance committee. At this point, despite the fact that the state was late in adopting a budget for this fiscal year, they are scheduled to be on schedule or commence in the process for fiscal year 22, which starts in just over six months. The, the state's revenue hearing is scheduled later this week and the governor is expected to have his budget out by the end of January in accordance with the state budgetary process. And so we will proceed at this time, much like, you know, normal. I have reached the school, reached out to the school committee and the finance committee. The school committee, again, has a reminder in their agenda tomorrow evening. I've also spoken with Dr. Lang. He is in the process of gathering, developing their budget and should have provided for me and then for the group on, on the meeting on the second Monday in January on the 11th with, you know, budgetary, you know, implications and impacts on a macro scale. And I also reached out to Denise Pigeon at the Shobat Tech. And she is, she is, will once again make her presence at our meeting as well as she did a year ago. So again, we're proceeding as normal and, and, you know, the, the capital planning committee, as I mentioned earlier, is, is meeting, they've had, they've met twice already. They're scheduled to wrap up their meetings and decisions this Thursday evening. And then there'll be a report at the January 11th on the capital plan from finance director John Souza, who chairs that committee. And then Dowling Lucia would also provide a budgetary mid-year report. And then again, we'd hear from Dr. Lang and Denise Pigeon and have our general discussion as we begin the planning process going forward. Again, less, less than a month from now. So that's, that's my report. I do have one set of appointments, which are customary at this time of the year. And that's for the holiday decorating committee. And I'm seeking the reappointment of the entire committee as presented from Allison Ludwig, Colleen Stansfield, Eric Merrill, John Floria, Sharon Smith, I'm sorry, and Vivian Merrill. And those appointments run with the calendar year. So it'd be through 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 Holiday Decorating Committee reappointments as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor, by roll call. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Thank you.
Voting delegate for the MIA Annual Member Business Meeting?
The MMA and the Maya Annual Business Meeting is scheduled on Thursday, January 21st and Friday, January 22nd. The Maya Annual Business Member Business Meeting is that Friday afternoon. At this point, I believe Pat Wojo is registered to attend that meeting. And, and I would ask that if that generally what's done at this time of the year is, is the board is generally assigned Pat to be the voting member from the town of Chelmsford, although history has shown the votes aren't that close. So major implications, but they, we did get a request, again, because it's all virtual this year, that we notify them in advance, who would be the voting member for the community.
I'll make a motion that we assign Pat Wojo as our voting member to the Maya Annual Members Business Meeting on January 22nd, 2021.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, by roll call? Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Pat. With that, we'll go to liaisons and we'll start with Pat.
Okay, just a couple of things. One of your colleagues, George Barry Baylen, I know you probably saw that he passed away last week. So condolences to his friends and family. Barry was a longtime member of the sewer commission. Very much involved with that and, and other endeavors in town. He's definitely going to be missed. He was a very nice guy. Also, I have a question about the tri board meeting. I noticed was scheduled for seven o'clock. Is there a reason we couldn't have that at six and two out of the three committees meet now at six o'clock?
The, the reason I went to seven is generally that it's been the finance committee who's requested the later hour. And, and, you know, I can inquire to see if they could make it earlier and I'll let you know. But yet, but you know, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out and see if I can do that.
Okay, thanks. And the only other thing I have is this is our last meeting for the year. So I wish everybody on the board and in the community, happy holidays and hopefully 2021 will be better than 2020. It can't be much worse. So, that's all I have.
Just jinxed us.
I hope not.
All right. Thank you, Pat. George?
Yeah, I, you know, I wanted to offer my condolences to Barry Baylen's family as well. He was a very close friend of mine, actually appointed me to the sewer commission years ago, 13, 14 years ago, I guess it was now. Barry was on there for many, many years, took over after Jackie Emerson passed on. Also today, when we get an email regarding Lenny Olenscheck, who's a classmate of mine, he's resigned as the town's ADA coordinator. And he's done a tremendous amount of work for that committee over the years. And also has done a tremendous amount of work at the senior center. There's both the chairman of the advisory board up there and he's done a lot of volunteer carpenter work and things like that. So he's a great guy. I, I hope he's healthy and, and I hope that he just, you know, is, is, you know, run his time out and then he just wanted to resign. I hope everything is okay with Lenny. He's a great guy, great family, and we'll miss him. Thank you. And I wish everybody a happy holiday.
All right. Thank you, George. Virginia?
The capital planning committee has heard project briefings from all of the proponents and will be having their prioritization meeting this Thursday. The conservation commission meeting tomorrow night is going to include a detailed discussion on the use of the Warren Pole property. And the vinyl square strategic action plan committee will be meeting
And the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee will be meeting again on January 12th. They have been addressing landscaping and other priorities for Vinyl Square and Burney Park, if anyone's interested in joining that discussion. I had just three questions, Ken and Paul. My first is because of the charter requirement where if a town meeting rep misses more than 50% of the meetings in a calendar year, they have, their seat is considered vacant unless they go through the appeal process. We have meeting reps who have been serving for like decades that apparently are getting notice because they were high-risk factors or had high-risk factors related to COVID. And I know we can't change the charter, but is there anything we can do to try to help move that process along smoothly for those meeting reps who don't want to vacate their seat?
It's, it's, it's my understanding that, you know, as you know, the letters have gone out and in the past, the committee has been very lenient. And I would, and my understanding and speaking to the town clerk is that that expectation, it, it will, will be utilized again this year. Again, the effort isn't to throw people off as town meeting reps. But again, I think it's a formal compliance with the charter. Basically, it's a long-winded way of saying, I think anybody who asks for, for a waiver will be allowed to stay as a town meeting rep.
Okay, thank you. My second question is related to the open committee vacancies. Would it be worth, I'd like a social media blast on that after the holidays in January, just to try to raise awareness of the vacancies that we do have? I think more people read the Chelmsford Facebook pages than view our meetings.
Well, sure. And what we can tie, what we can tie it into is at your meeting on January 4th, as is customary, the town clerk, Patricia Doris, will be at the beginning of your meeting under public service announcements to invite people to serve in, in, you know, town, as town meeting reps in, in the offices that are coming up on the town ballot. I think in conjunction with that, we can also make a pitch for people to serve on appointed committees. In the messenger that's coming out for the January edition, that is sort of the message that I have is that, you know, for requesting that people who are interested in stepping forth to serve the community in an elected or appointed manner to do so. But we can issue a social media blast as well at that time.
Okay. And then my, my third question has to do with our goals for this year. We, we had a couple of joint Select Board Town Manager Goals. And one of them was to complete the implementation of the recommendations for the Values and Vision Committee. And I think at least part of that is going to require some discussion because it's not, you know, things like put signs up in the buildings and put it on the website are pretty specific. But then there was, there's one about how do we really roll this out formally for boards and committees? And I, I'm, I'm asking, unless there's an objection, if we could put that on as a discussion topic for our, one of our January meetings, so that we can more formally address how we're going to address that, those implementation recommendations. Thank you. And happy holidays, everyone.
And I'll just reiterate that last topic that actually sort of dovetails with George's notes about Lenny Olenscheck. I've been related on to the provisions on disabilities and Len's been fantastic. So he's going to be really missed and sad to see him go. It was nice getting to know him. We are looking desperately for people to fill the Commission on Disability Board. We need help on that board and if anybody's, you know, interested or just wants to feel a little bit more, we're having a Zoom meeting tomorrow night. They can look at the town webpage, the calendar for the details for this meeting tomorrow night. With that, everybody have a great and safe holiday and a happy new year and we'll see you next year.
You have press on the call, in softball.
She left.
Maybe she left.
Mr. Trump?
Yep. And then, and one quick apology, Chief spinning heads and technical difficulties when we were having the conversation about the emails that we read into record before. And he asked if he could speak, so we'll let him speak now quickly.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I apologize for the, the technical problem. I just felt obligated to say a few words. I want to thank the board first, the members of the board for the positive comments tonight about the men and women in Chelmsford Police Department. You're really not going to find a, a finer group, I know what was said tonight. "New England, New England leads the nation in training and professionalism in law enforcement. Massachusetts leads New England." And I feel confident in saying that Chelmsford is a leader in the region. And I really believe that. I see, I see the job they do every day. So I appreciate the comments that were made tonight on their behalf. I want to commend the Select Board for the creation of the Diversity Committee. I think it's a, it was an absolute right thing to do for Chelmsford. And I have been planning and preparing to meet with that committee ever since its creation. I knew the police department would be a significant step for that committee for, for all the right reasons. So I, but I was surprised and I was disappointed with the comments that were made. They're not helpful. It's not helpful to group, any group of people together with disparaging comments, especially when there, there are a group of people that you're going to be partnering with to help make this town better. So that's my thought on that. I did reach out to Mr. Hicks after I was made aware of that meeting and I watched the meeting, had a fantastic conversation with, with the Diversity Committee Chairman, Mr. Hicks. He has pledged to me that he is committed to moving forward in a positive way, and I told him the same thing. So I, as the current police chief, am 100% on board with having nothing but full partnership and positive interaction with this committee. And I plan on having a fantastic meeting with them in January to show them and illustrate to them all the things the men and women in Chelmsford Police Department are doing for this town on a daily basis, long before the tragedy that happened this past summer. So that's my commitment to you as, as the Select Board. So I just felt obligated to say that. I appreciate the time and happy holidays.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Be safe out there. All right, with that, and just check, so press is still not here, right? And there's nothing in the chat box. We're good. And our next meeting, I'll see you in January.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
The motion second, on favor by roll call. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Thank you.
All right.